There's a little flicker, right?
You know who's going first, PJ or...
What's on there first? Does PJ's separate?
Insurance or...
I'll go ask them.
I know it. Yeah, no, I know. I just want you to know in case you hear anything about it. I've already been hearing about it.
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't know. Preschool that now is what I'm supposed to be about, but they don't think they could be.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 115 Board Meeting for April 8, 2013 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Here. Here.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind everyone that we do, we will suspend our business at seven o'clock for the public hearing on the honorable dismissal of teachers. That takes us to item number five, awards and recognition.
Lana Myers, we come up, representing the PFT.
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and/or reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Brett Elliott, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of our winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Tika O'Neal. Come on up, Tika. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Kim Still at Peoria High. Come on up. Congratulations, Kim.
I just wanted to say a few words about Kim and why I nominated her. I'm a brand-new teacher. This is my second year, and first of all, she has been invaluable to me as a friend and collaborator. She's just been very generous with her knowledge. But the thing most that strikes me about Kim as a teacher and a person is she loves math, and she's very businesslike about math. And when you're in her room, it's business. She takes her work home like most teachers do during the week, on the weekends, over holidays. She's busy working, trying to revamp things, trying to make them better for her students. But the flip side of that coin is she's not all business. I've seen her cry over students, failures, and things that have happened in their lives. I've seen her rejoice with them and laugh. She's just a wonderful, all-around person. Her sense of humor has carried us through a lot of changes at Peoria High School. We've been challenged a lot the last two years, and every time we have a new challenge, and I'll go, "Oh, what are they gonna change next?" Kim will go, "We can do it. We can do it." And she'll find a way to make it fun and enjoyable. So that's why I really think that, she's worked a lot of years, fifteen, sixteen years, sixteen years as a teacher, and I thought, boy, if she hasn't been recognized yet, she should be. So, Kim Still.
I just wanted to say thank you for this honor. It's very humbling. I'm very blessed to have been around so many wonderful teachers to watch and learn from as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Still. Okay, that takes us to announcements.
Several announcements. Number one, this Saturday, April 13th, we will have our first annual Step and Dance Team Showcase. It will be held at Woodruff, and it will start at three o'clock. Doors open at 2:15. It will begin at three o'clock, and the admission is $5 per person. So our middle and high schools' dance and step teams will be competing against each other, and we're hoping that this will grow. This year, we added dance as another option for our middle school students, and we've had step teams at our two high schools, and then also at some of our middle schools. So once again, that's at Saturday, Woodruff at three o'clock. Doors open at 2:15. And it's basically a fundraiser for those, each of those groups to be able to continue to sustain their programming. Also tonight, I'd like to, on behalf of the district, recognize Mr. Bobby Darlin as the outgoing president of the PFT, to say, Bobby, thank you for your leadership. We didn't always see eye to eye, but we could respectfully agree to disagree. And he walked out a couple times, it'd take him sometimes an hour or ten days to come back, but he did come back, and we would start all over again. So I do thank you for your leadership. Thank you for trying to meet us halfway and doing what was right, because at the end of the day, I will say, we might have disagreed on many things, but I know your true agenda was the best interest of every child in this district and every staff member. So I thank you for your leadership.
Any other announcements from board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to approve our minutes from our last meeting, March 25, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll? Aye.
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 Aye. We have now come to the place on our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefits of our minutes.
... around student records are discussed in private and so those would not be discussed Around student records are discussed in private and so those would not be discussed in public. in public. I'll ask Reverend Butler and Ms. Patel to respond in reference to the parent advisory I'll ask Reverend Butler and Ms. Patel to respond in reference to the parent advisory group. group. And just one other additional thing as it relates to the notifications and reduction And just one other additional thing as it relates to the notifications and the reduction in force tonight. in force tonight. It was our goal, based on feedback we received at last year's hearing, to notify every staff It was our goal, based on feedback we received at last year's hearing, to notify every staff member that was, that would be impacted tonight. member that was, that would be impacted tonight. We did that before spring break. We did that before spring break. Staff members either received a, actually two notifications, one via email and also Staff members either received a, actually two notifications, one via email and also a letter was mailed out. a letter was mailed out. And then some staff members were also notified by their building principals. And then some staff members were also notified by their building principals. If I'm wrong, please, HR, because they are here tonight to share, please correct this. If I'm wrong, please, HR, because they are here tonight to share, please correct this. So if, based on the addresses that we had on file and the district email addresses. So if, based on the addresses that we had on file and the district email addresses. So we did try to notify people so they would not be caught off guard by tonight. So we did try to notify people so they would not be caught off guard by tonight. So some of the, hopefully some of the people that were asking you never receive notification So some of the, hopefully some of the people that were asking you never received notification and they don't have that issue. and they don't have that issue. Reverend Butler or Ms. Patel, in reference to the parent advisory group, do you have Reverend Butler or Ms. Patel, in reference to the parent advisory group, do you have any response? any response?
I don't, I don't think either of us believes that parental involvement is unimportant. I don't, I don't think either of us believes that parental involvement is unimportant. I don't think we'd give this much time to the committee. I don't think we'd give this much time to the committee. If we did, we will be meeting on Thursday at 4:45, I believe. If we did, we will be meeting on Thursday at 4:45, I believe. Joanie will be posting that tomorrow. Joanie will be posting that tomorrow. We have had people joining us throughout the year and the agenda we set at the beginning We have had people joining us throughout the year and the agenda we set at the beginning of the year, which we discussed with the board, was to deal with the bullying policy of the year, which we discussed with the board, was to deal with the bullying policy and to clarify the bullying policy. and to clarify the bullying policy. So the last several meetings that Mr. McGowan has joined us for, we have been specifically So the last several meetings that Mr. McGowan has joined us for, we have been specifically discussing and narrowing down the language on the bullying policy that we will be submitting discussing and narrowing down the language on the bullying policy that we will be submitting to the policy committee. to the policy committee. So we have not, the last few months, had a wide-ranging discussion of parental involvement So we have not, the last few months, had a wide-ranging discussion of parental involvement generally, because we have been focused in on finishing the work for this year of dealing generally, because we have been focused in on finishing the work for this year of dealing with the bullying policy. with the bullying policy. Our major agenda item for tomorrow will in fact be a wider range, or for tomorrow, Our major agenda item for tomorrow will in fact be a wider range, or for tomorrow, for for Thursday, will be a wider-ranging discussion of what our priorities as a committee should Thursday, will be a wider-ranging discussion of what our priorities as a committee should be for next year. be for next year. And that will be an excellent time for parents and teachers to join us and discuss in a And that will be an excellent time for parents and teachers to join us and discuss in a wide-ranging way what we will focus on for next year. wide-ranging way what we will focus on for next year. We are in a very small room on Thursday though, so wear layers. We are in a very small room on Thursday though, so wear layers. What would you like to add to that? What would you like to add to that?
I would just like to add that for anyone that attends the committee, as Mr. McGowan I would just like to add that for anyone that attends the committee, as Mr. McGowan knows, that we do have open discussion. knows, that we do have open discussion. It may not always provide the answer that someone is looking for, but we do ask for It may not always provide the answer that someone is looking for, but we do ask for input and we do take those things under consideration. input and we do take those things under consideration. Ms. Patel, as you stated, we had a focus this year of making sure we would revise the bullying Ms. Patel, as you stated, we had a focus this year of making sure we would revise the bullying policy and this Thursday there would be an opportunity to set the agenda for the coming policy and this Thursday there would be an opportunity to set the agenda for the coming year. year. I don't want anyone to think that if they come to the meeting that they are not heard. I don't want anyone to think that if they come to the meeting that they are not heard. You will be heard and we will work with those issues as much as possible. You will be heard and we will work with those issues as much as possible. I think we have sat down with Mr. McGowan at times to help him to understand the protocol, I think we have sat down with Mr. McGowan at times to help him to understand the protocol, the process, the system, timing and everything that goes into a change. the process, the system, timing and everything that goes into a change. And so when something is offered at once, it does not mean that there will be an immediate And so when something is offered at once, it does not mean that there will be an immediate change that comes forward. change that comes forward. So there is patience in creating good and great change. So there is patience in creating good and great change. So I would just ask those who come with, you know, good ideas, things that would bring So I would just ask those who come with, you know, good ideas, things that would bring great change to the district, to be patient and to work with those who have been assigned great change to the district, to be patient and to work with those who have been assigned to that committee to bring forward their interests and concerns. to that committee to bring forward their interests and concerns.
Yeah, and I would also say on a more informal note, you know, it is a committee. Yeah, and I would also say on a more informal note, you know, it is a committee. Everything does take time and it sometimes does feel like we're sitting there talking Everything does take time and it sometimes does feel like we're sitting there talking about the same thing for months on end. about the same thing for months on end. There are limited things that we as a district can do with respect to parental involvement. There are limited things that we as a district can do with respect to parental involvement. There are things that simply have to be taken up with the state legislature and there are There are things that simply have to be taken up with the state legislature and there are things that we just can't do with parents, that parents are going to have to make that things that we just can't do with parents, that parents are going to have to make that decision themselves. decision themselves. And the other thing is we have tried this year to keep the discussions in parent teacher And the other thing is we have tried this year to keep the discussions in parent teacher advisory committee a little more directed and a little more on point, because some advisory committee a little more directed and a little more on point, because some of you have participated in the past may know that it sometimes devolves into people of you have participated in the past may know that it sometimes devolves into people sitting there saying, "Kids today," for an hour and just talking about how kids have sitting there saying, "Kids today," for an hour and just talking about how kids have no discipline and we should, you know, complain about kids not having any discipline, which no discipline and we should, you know, complain about kids not having any discipline, which I don't, I don't think is true and I don't think is productive as to our mission. I don't, I don't think is true and I don't think is productive as to our mission. So we have tried to have more focused and goal-oriented discussions instead of people So we have tried to have more focused and goal-oriented discussions instead of people complaining at random, which does sometimes happen in committee meetings, because we complaining at random, which does sometimes happen in committee meetings, because we are governing by committee. are governing by committee. I know that's a little more off the cuff, but I know some of you have been there before I know that's a little more off the cuff, but I know some of you have been there before and have participated in those meetings. and have participated in those meetings. And we really have made an effort this year to focus, be productive and bring something And we really have made an effort this year to focus, be productive and bring something productive and helpful to the children and the staff out of it. productive and helpful to the children and the staff out of it. And I think everyone will be pleased, I hope everyone will be pleased, with the bullying And I think everyone will be pleased, I hope everyone will be pleased, with the bullying policy that we have brought forward this year. policy that we have brought forward this year. We're now looking at the lawyer's input, which makes me like it so much less, but That we're now looking at the lawyer's input, which makes me like it so much less, but we're working on that. we're working on that.
And to also put things in perspective, this is a committee meeting that happens And to also put things in perspective, this is a committee meeting that happens once a month. once a month. So when you look at by time we get started in September or October and try to have something So when you look at by time we get started in September or October and try to have something ready, as everything is this time of the year, come February or March, you're talking ready, as everything is this time of the year, come February or March, you're talking maybe four to six good opportunities to get something constructively done. maybe four to six good opportunities to get something constructively done. So you do have to remain focused if you're going to have purpose and bring forth some So you do have to remain focused if you're going to have purpose and bring forth some productivity with it. productivity with it. So I just want to put that in perspective too. So I just want to put that in perspective too. It's not like we've been meeting for nine months, every day and things have been happening. It's not like we've been meeting for nine months, every day and things have been happening. We're looking at the fact that we have come together, overall it might be half a dozen We're looking at the fact that we have come together, overall it might be half a dozen times to bring forward good policy. times to bring forward good policy.
And we have had at several of those meetings, we've had Chief Collins, Jeanne, is it Anders, And we have had at several of those meetings, we've had Chief Collins, Jeanne, is it Anders, from Center for Prevention of Abuse. from Center for Prevention of Abuse. We've had a lot of input from our staff and from our community on the issue of bullying, We've had a lot of input from our staff and from our community on the issue of bullying, on cyberbullying, on modern responses to bullying. on cyberbullying, on modern responses to bullying. And so there have been miss, two or three of those six meetings where we spent an hour And so there have been miss, two or three of those six meetings where we spent an hour and a half or two hours discussing with these community members and hearing input from and a half or two hours discussing with these community members and hearing input from professionals in the field to help us put this together. professionals in the field to help us put this together. So our discussions were not as wide-ranging on those days as well. So our discussions were not as wide-ranging on those days as well. But we really appreciate those people's input. But we really appreciate those people's input.
Okay, it's now seven o'clock and that comes, that brings us to the board public Okay, it's now seven o'clock and that comes, that brings us to the board public hearing regarding the proposed honorable dismissal of teachers. hearing regarding the proposed honorable dismissal of teachers. Do we need a motion and a second to adjourn our, to move into the hearing? Do we need a motion and a second to adjourn our, to move into the hearing?
No. No.
No? No? Okay. Okay. I have some opening remarks. I have some opening remarks. That takes us to remarkable rule number two, respect learning. Dr. Latham.
Yes, Ms. Hammer, if you would come up. Ms. Hammer is Director of Employee Services. We're very excited tonight to have the HR department, payroll department, finance department present to the board. Many years ago, we purchased Skyward and one of the charges when we reorganized last fall to Ms. Hammer was to continue to get things up and moving as it relates to efficiency and being effective in our district. And so excited tonight for them to present and share with us the updates and where we're, how we're moving toward a more paperless environment. So a very special thank you to Ms. Hammer for your leadership and to all the young ladies that are presenting tonight. A very special thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few words to start with. Superintendent Dr. Latham, Board of Education, Cabinet and audience members. Last September, I was given the directive to implement the Skyward modules associated with my current department's ever purchase originally at the time Skyward was introduced to the district. Implementing these modules will increase efficiency, streamlining of resources and processes, accountability for every employee, ultimately saving money by eliminating paper, toner for fax machines and copiers. These modules are as follows. Fast track, this is the posting of open positions, applicant applications, and then integrating into the new hire process with the applicant's information. Cabinet has been given a detailed presentation with trainings in April for the principals and assistant principals with full implementation May 1st. and assistant principals with full implementation, May 1st. This will eliminate any further payments to the AppleTrack system currently being used. Second, Task Manager is an electronic to-do list system for processes to eliminate paper forms and faxing to and from other departments and buildings. The ASAP subcalling system is to interface directly into the payroll subtracting module, eliminating duplicate data entry work by the building clerical staff. Right now, these modules are being used separately. Currently, we have one building testing this new process. TrueTime is an electronic time worked, time off record-keeping system to be integrated into the payroll module. Once again, my departments are the test subjects to get this all worked out. We've expanded to other departments in the administration building right now, and this is a huge culture change and training endeavor district-wide going forward. Last but not least, the insurance tracking module that was implemented January 1st of 2011, this year, Skyward is now has a new module called online open enrollment for yearly insurance enrollment period during the month of November, effective 1/1 of the following year. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the excellent and dedicated staff that you employ, and who will give you a more detailed look at those modules I mentioned. They have all communicated and worked together extensively. Each one of them have endured all-day onsite trainings, multiple webinars, and numerous conference calls to become extremely educated in their areas of expertise to make this a success. The HR department, Amy Moore, Shannon Bond, Janet Ogden, Rebecca Goodall, Marcia Harris. Patricia Smith is the insurance specialist. Payroll department, Helen Sanders, Kathy Parsons, Tanya Mack, and Vicki Fry, which is out sick tonight, and then our Skyward support tech, Arlissa Holford. Ready?
Chris, I may need your help on this one. I'm not so techie. Promise? Okay, there it is. Thank you, Jerry, for that introduction. My name is Shannon Bond. I represent the HR department. We have worked really hard with trying to apply these new modules to our current systems that we have. Right now, I'm going to kind of go over Fast Track, which is the module for posting vacancies, reviewing applications, and selecting the final candidate. Benefits of the new modules, obviously, the financial benefits are going to be the number one concern here. AppleTrack is a very expensive program that we currently use. Implementing Fast Track will save the district $4,300 annually. Besides the cost of that, paperless is huge. We'll be saving toner, we'll be saving ink, we'll be saving time, and we'll make it more efficient. Point number two is it'll be a faster approval process. Right now, we're doing everything on paper, and things tend to get lost every now and again, so our main priority is to make our turnaround a little bit faster and to focus more on the employment requests. The third point is the fact that it's going to be now digital. It's going to be better tracking and accountability. I know accountability is huge right now, so our main focus is to make sure that we hold our managers and supervisors responsible for their selections. Also, the stricter checks and balances with position control will help it make it more efficient for our hiring. The request to post a vacancy is directly related to our position control. In case you're not familiar with what the position control is, it's a module that's part of Skyward that allows us to be able to determine what an employee does, along with their assignment and their building. Skyward allows this module here to be able to, all the meetings that we just got done going through with the projected enrollment for next year, we can go in ahead and apply it into this system and allow our hiring supervisors or our principals to be able to request that we post a vacancy now, all done through Skyward instead of having us manually do all the data entry. Next, the approval process has not changed at all, so everyone will still have the final say, will still have to go through our finance, will still have to go through the director, the hiring managers, will still have full access to everything. It's just going strictly from paper to a new digital format. Lastly, the projected timeline. We are going to be training all of our principals on the new processes here soon. On the 16th, the assistant principals will be trained thereafter. We're going to open up Fast Track to all of the applicants, and also inform all of our current applicants of the changes. So, we'll send them out an email just letting them know that we're switching over to a new system, and encourage them to apply into the new system so that they are familiar what's going on. Our contract with AppleTrack ends on May 9th. The next thing I'm going to kind of briefly go over is Task Manager. Basically, what Jerry said is that it's a digital to-do list, and that is true. Everything that we do now for the change in job status, down to hiring tutors, for payroll authorizations, all these little things that really affect our inner department, we're going to speed up and make more efficient by doing it all digitally, and it's kind of like a way of being able to do all these functions along with an approval process. So, we're pretty excited with it. It's still a work in progress, and we're still open for other departments to speak up and let us know if there's any way that we can help on their end to contact us. So, I know I kind of went through that very quickly. Any questions? You're making it too easy on me. All right, well, thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Marcia. Yes? Got a question, please?
Never let an opportunity go. Question go by.
I was warned.
In the transition, this is a, pretty much a one-to-one transition in terms of the current database moving into this system?
Are you talking about, in reference to AppleTrack?
Yes.
We will actually end our, once we end our contract, it will, it will be finished, it'll be over with, and all of those old applicants will have to log on to our new system. It'll basically be the same questions, the same layout, the same format, but we will not be able to convert all of the information that we currently have into the new one.
So, in that process, do we lose applicants?
With our attempts to be able to contact them early so that they will have time to be able to review their current active application, we're hoping to maybe encourage them to sneak back and to review it and maybe update it, and then they will have to go through and put in all of their information over again. We also currently in AppleTrack have a lot of inactive applications, so this is also a really good time for us to kind of clean up and really focus on who really wants to work with the district and who, you know, we're trying to contact.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much, Marcia Harris.
Hello, my name is Marcia. I work in the Human Resources Department. I'm going to talk to you tonight about our ASAP and payroll integration. For those of you who are not familiar with ASAP, ASAP is an automated substitute calling system. Currently, all school employees are required to enter their absences into ASAP for self-coverage as well as for attendance tracking purposes. ASAP sends an email every morning to school secretaries, as well as the principals, letting them know who's going to be in their building that day, who's missing, and any unfilled absences that they have. Currently, the school secretaries have to print out that daily report and manually enter all the substitute teacher information into our Skyward subtracting module. They also have to fill out a separate payroll for teacher aides and clerks, and actually fax that over to the payroll department for processing. This creates more work for the secretaries because it's kind of duplicating the process. So, once we integrate ASAP with the payroll department and Skyward subtracting, the payroll specialists are now able to log in ASAP and export data and process all substitutes electronically versus doing teachers electronic, or doing teachers in Skyward and then having paper coming in for clerks and teacher aides. This will make it so that payroll can pull it on the dates that they need it and go ahead and process it. So, this will eliminate some work for the school secretaries, as well as the principals. The only thing that they will need to do is verify each record in ASAP is correct every day. That's just a matter of them actually going to that daily report that's emailed to them and clicking a button, and just saying, "I verify that what I see on this report is accurate." So, to summarize, this is our way of becoming paperless and integrating both systems. This is our way of eliminating some work for the secretaries and the principals. Currently, we are testing this on a pilot school, which is Keller Primary School. We are going to be pulling in a high school soon, we're not sure which one at the time, but our plan is to have this all rolled out and completely integrated for next school year. Any questions?
And, not so much about the system, but I know when we first started using the ASAP program for the subs, there were some kinks in it and some problems, and I think I've heard that a lot of that stuff has been worked out as far as both for the schools and for the substitutes themselves. Is that what you guys are seeing, is that you think it's moving along a lot better now?
Yes, it's moving much smoother. I think the staff understand the system better, as well as the principals and the secretaries, who are actually going in there using the system.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to be handing it over to Arlissa Holford to talk to you about our TrueTime system.
Good evening. My name's Arlissa Holford, and I work in Skyward Finance Support, and I'm going to go over our TrueTime module. Currently, employees don't have a way to track their time, so we have started to work into getting everything set up for time tracking, and employees will not be able to track their time by using a combination of different equipment. They'll be able to log on to the computer in order to track their time, or they can use time clocks. This is a screenshot of what they actually would use after logging into Skyward Finance. They currently log into Skyward Finance to check their paychecks, stubs, W2s. Everyone gets those by now, I hope. But, it's as simple as just clicking on their in for the day, there's a button for that. I was, I had already clocked in, so if they have more than one position within District 150, they can change their job. They'll be able to track their time for breaks, for lunch, as well as being gone for the This is the time scanners that we currently have in some locations. What we do is we set up all employees with a ID code, along with a fingerprint verification. We do understand that some employees will not be able to use their fingerprints, and we have a way of accessing or using different, not software, but actually getting around the fingerprint issue. I know mine doesn't work all the time, and some people who've been through chemotherapy, their fingerprints don't work either, so there's a way of getting around that. This is the supervisor's screen. The supervisors will be able to actually go in, review the time for all employees, as well as make changes if they need to, and they will be able to submit the time sheets electronically, which actually sends them to payroll, where payroll will be able to input the information or pull it in. So, instead of having all of the paper being faxed over, it'll just be a screen where they'll be able to go in and input the time sheets for all of the employees. Our time off module also works with TrueTime. Employees will enter their time off requests, whether it's sick days, vacation. The supervisor also will be able to go in and approve it, approve it, and the clerical in the schools especially, they won't have to go through and do everyone's time. The employees themselves, the teachers, custodial staff, they'll all be able to do that. Oh, wow. That's small. This is actually a screenshot of what they'll be able to do. They'll go into the employee access module under time off, and they'll be able to just click on what type of time they would like, how many hours they would like to use, and submit it to their supervisor for approval. The supervisor will then get a screen like this, where they will be able to approve or deny all in one shot, so they can approve it all, deny it all, and they'll be able to actually, this attaches to the time sheet for the employees. So, if I took a day off for today, the, before it actually goes to payroll, it'll all come together, so there won't be two different sheets of paper going through the departments. It'll just be one, and it'll all be electronic. After the supervisor approves their time off, it will actually show up on their calendars under employee access, so they'll be able to see what employees have what days off, as well as being able to know if they can even allow another person off. They'll be able to see exactly, and this, you can put it in for next year. Right now, it'll automatically take the time off, and it will show on the calendar for all supervisors. So, payroll will be able to actually pull in the electronic time sheets for processing the approved time off, and all of our paid holidays are also included on that time sheet. Some of the incentives is it will automate and streamline the process. It does increase accountability. It reduces opportunities for human error. We're also trying to go paperless, and it'll reduce the workload from the school secretaries. We have started to implement this. HR and payroll are right now our test subjects. We have had fingerprint issues. Also, we got a new phone system that also kind of messed up our system. In the past, there have been issues with time clocks not being the same in every building, so we're working on that. We do have missing and broken equipment in some of our school building locations, and it is going to have a long test period. We do have a lot of different employee types, and so in order for us to make sure that everyone's getting paid on time, payroll, we'll, we're going to take quite a bit of time to get it implemented. And does anyone have any questions?
Just to point out that the time clocks and the machines were actually purchased, if I'm not mistaken, when we actually purchased Skyward eight years ago, and so we never utilized these features that you're hearing about tonight, correct? As far as the time, the fingerprinting and the PIN numbers and...
Right. It never actually had been implemented, but since the purchasing, I think there was 32 actual fingerprint scanners purchased for our locations. I think we have nine that actually are accounted for. Some have been, some are missing power supplies, some just don't have connectivity to the server, so we would have to look into possibly buying new machines for that.
I'm Patricia Smith. I'm the insurance specialist for District 150. Our current focus right now is utilizing Skyward to the best of its abilities as we have it now. That has included adding life insurance beneficiary information to Skyward. All employees who have life insurance are now able to view their beneficiaries online through the program that allows them to view their check stubs and their W2s, so it's a program that they are familiar with. Currently with this program, they are also allowed to see the coverages that they are enrolled in. The upcoming changes for Skyward are in July. There's going to be an update that will allow for beneficiaries to be listed. This is a really big piece because not everybody has the same beneficiaries for each coverage, so this is going to be beneficial to the employees, for sure. After the update, we're going to work on getting all of that information input, and like I said, it will be different for each type of coverage. You may have a daughter, or two daughters on health insurance, and just one of them on dental, depending on your situation at the time. We are working towards online open enrollment this year. It will allow the employees to confirm their coverages online. What we currently do is during November, we have several meetings. We have informational meetings where the carriers will come and speak about the different companies and answer any questions that employees may have. We have drop-off times. This year, we had 1,400, a little over 1,400 employees that are eligible for insurance, and each one of these employees has to fill out, at the minimum, a flexible benefits form. and each one of these employees has to fill out at the minimum a flexible benefits form. The flexible benefits form is something that we're going to add to Skyward as a customizable form, so they'll be able to fill that out online. Some of the benefits of online open enrollment, it's going to decrease the day spent stuffing packets. Each employee that is eligible for insurance gets a full packet, including all the health information, dental information, vision information, and flex information. So that takes an entire day to stuff, and then the warehouse has to come and deliver those packets. So that's going to save a ton of time and paper there. During open enrollment, it's going to save employees. Right now, they have to travel to the different locations or times to drop off their paperwork, but they're going to be able to do that from home. We're still going to have the informational meetings that's going to allow the employees the opportunity to speak with the carriers, but it's going to be at their discretion. If they do not want to come, they do not have to. Does you have any questions? Thank you.
I have one. Don't go yet. Coordination of benefits, if there are two people that are employed in the household and one has coverage with one company and one has coverage with District 150, does this system recognize and take that into account?
The way our contracts are set up now, coordination of benefits is allowed, so that wouldn't be something that the system at this point would need to account for. It would allow each employee has a master record for each coverage type, so each individual employee would be able to manipulate their coverages individually.
Okay, but I guess the point is, if there's an employee and their spouse has insurance coverage by someone else, that spouse's employer should be the first to cover that cost, not the district's insurance. Is that the way that works?
Yes and no. As far as Skyward is concerned, if that employee has employee spouse coverage, that's all Skyward needs to know. When the employee went to, say, the doctor's office, the spouse would turn in both insurances, and then that spouse's insurance would be the primary and billed first, and the spouse's, their spouse's insurance or our coverage would be billed second. That would be a doctor's office issue.
But how does, and we don't do that?
We don't do the coordination out of our office anymore, do we? Isn't that, isn't that, the insurance company does it. We don't have self-insured, so we don't do it. The insurance company does it.
We don't have to deal with that, then?
No.
Correct.
There's a place on the form that if you have other coverage...
Right.
You can indicate it.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks.
Just a few comments. Number one, I wanted to say again, thank you so much to HR, Finance, and Payroll. Thank you, ladies. You have done an outstanding job. Insurance tracking has just been phenomenal as it relates to getting everything. It was so great last week to get that email PJ to say you can now go online, but of course you have to remember your password to go online to check that stuff. It's great how efficient and effective you are. And once again, I don't think people truly realize that we purchased a program. One of the things we're doing is trying to get away from having so many different programs in the district far as the different systems that we use. We purchased something that will give us the results we need. One of the true testaments to that tonight is the number of people that we are doing the honorable dismissal with, because we had the entire HR team. They were entertained a couple of weeks ago as we worked through position control, because we really wanted to get it right based on the number of people that we were releasing from the district and being able also to retain. And they have truly worked hard, and I don't think they get enough credit for that. And so we are saying thank you tonight, ladies, for your hard work and behind the scenes, because you help employees from beginning to end, and I do say thank you so much.
Ms. Wolfmeyer?
I just want to say, first of all, that I'm amazed. I mean, there are some of you who are still here who were around when I was still working, and I won't mention any of you, because then we know how long you've been around. But I'm just amazed, because nine years ago when I retired, we were still doing everything, but you were still doing, not we, you were doing everything by hand, even though we had computer programs in place that couldn't be trusted to do it. So you're entering the information and doing it by hand. And we had someone twice now speak about efficiency. I mean, the efficiency that's going to take over here is remarkable to me. Of course, I'm sure that as you become more efficient and have less work, we'll find more for you to do. That's undoubtedly. And I'm glad to see that there's a specific process in place now for the applications and how they're handled and all that kind of thing. I do want to say good luck to changing the culture of this district about this kind of thing and getting people to go online to do the things you need them to do. We all know how hard change is, but I really appreciate the presentation, because it gives us a really good update on where we are going and talking about, as we talk about efficiencies and things like that, we can see we're trying to use what we've got and coordinate it all together. I know it's a lot of work for you guys to get it all there, so hopefully, once it's there, it's going to make your jobs a little easier. But we do appreciate everything you guys do. I know sometimes you're the most popular people and sometimes the most unpopular people, so, and you probably hear more of the unpopular than you do the popular. But thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation, and good luck for all the changes you're going to try and implement.
And they do go out to different departments.
Yeah, I bet that's a lot of fun, too, isn't it?
Information.
I remember what it was like.
Thank you again. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. That takes us to Remarkable Rule Number Three, Respect Our Finances. Any questions for Dr. Kenny on our purchase orders over $2,500? Seeing none, that will take us to Remarkable Rule Number Four, Respect Individual Differences. Dr. Lathan?
Since our last board meeting report on March 11, 2013, we received one new Freedom of Information Act request. This request has not been filled. There were four pending requests noted on the March 11, 2013 board report. They were filled. We've received 22 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. That takes us to tonight's action items. Vice President Cloyde, the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gifts to the school district is item number one. This meeting totaled $775 and a year to date, $101,206.57. Proposed action is that the Board of Education accept the following donations and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. The Lexmark scanner printer valued at $25 by Barbara Eunice to Galenoak School, and a Roth 4/4 violin valued at $750 by Cameron Ferguson to Richmond's High School. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources Report. Proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, travel requests. Item number five, purchase of used school buses. The proposed action is that the district purchase four used 2011 Transit-style school buses from Central State Bus Sales. The total cost of the purchase is $258,900, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Cloyde. Would any board members like any of the items on tonight's consent agenda? Pull for a separate vote. Seeing none, I need a motion and a second to approve the items on tonight's consent agenda. I will make that, go ahead.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Vice President Cloyde?
Yes. Dr. Kenny, could you describe the school bus purchase and the, some of the details behind it, please?
Yeah. These are buses that are lease returns. We have actually, Mr. Mendoza went up and looked at the buses. They're in a district that leases buses instead of purchasing them, and they've been housed in a garage at night, so they're in really good condition, and we're just anxious to take advantage of what we think are some pretty good deals.
What would these be if we purchased them new, would you guess?
They're about $20,000 apiece higher than that.
Okay. And we didn't need to bid on this?
We do not need to bid on used equipment.
Just wanted to know. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kenny. Any other discussion on the items on tonight's consent agenda? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
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 Aye. That takes us to the items on tonight's deliberation agenda. Ms. Wolfmeyer?
Item number six is revocation of board probation. The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated April 8, 2013 be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
Mr. Cloyde.
Aye.
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 Item number seven is expulsions. The proposed action, that the expulsions listed on the report dated April 8, 2013 be approved as amended.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
Mr. Cloyde.
Aye.
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 Aye. Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session. Item number eight, honorable dismissal of teachers. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the resolution of the honorable dismissal of teachers pursuant to Section 2412 of the school code, 105 ILCS 5/24-12.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? I would just say that it's unfortunate that we have to do these things because of the way the timing works out, as Mr. Luizy mentioned earlier, and that this is a very cumbersome and unfortunate way to have to manage staffing because of the timing that's defined by the state of Illinois and its school code. So we don't do these things gladly, but we have to do them because it's the only prudent way to manage our activities at this point, so. I will second that. Ms. Wolfmeyer?
And the only other thing I want to say is I agree with Mr. Devine. If it's at all possible, the sooner we can call these teachers back, the better, as we know, and I know we try to do that every year, and our hands are tied to a certain extent, but it's just not productive to wait until July or August, if at all possible, to call the people back. And I know the administration will work hard at doing that.
And we, I appreciate, I'm sure we all appreciate, how much work that your staff has done to release fewer teachers and bring them back faster. And this is, we do it every year. It's a stupid method of managing, funding and managing personnel. It's a terrible way to do it. But it affects us, and it affects the teachers, it doesn't affect the state legislature, so I don't see it changing anytime soon.
I know that when, on one of the conferences I attended, we did have a little bit of a discussion on a two-year budgeting process, if the state be allowed, you know, give us some more, you know, defined numbers. And I think that, you know, personally, as I sit here, that's something I'd like to call for. I mean, it's ridiculous that we can't, if the, people ask me, you know, well, how much money are you going to have next year? And in fact, I ask the same questions to Dr. Kenny, and Dr. Kenny says, I don't know. I mean, it's, for people that pride themselves on trying to provide answers and be definitive, it's so up in the air at times, it's very frustrating. So I guess we'll move on to the vote, then. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
Mr. Cloyde.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine, dismissal of part-time teachers. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the dismissal of part-time teachers pursuant to Section 24-11 of the school code, 105 ILCS 5/24-11.
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
Mr. Cloyde.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 10, dismissal of first, second, and third-year probationary teachers. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the dismissal of first, second, and third-year probationary teachers for reasons other than reduction in force pursuant to Section 24-11 of the school code, 105 ILCS 5/24-11. Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
Mr. Cloyde.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 11, dismissal of fourth-year probationary teacher. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the dismissal of fourth-year probationary teacher for reasons other than reduction in force pursuant to Section 24-11 of the school code, 105 ILCS 5/24-11.
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel, aye.
Mr. Cloyde.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Aye. That takes us to the place on tonight's agenda, presentation and suggestions by board members. Ms. Patel?
I would like the staffers to come to one of our board meetings and step for us.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yes, I think at the last meeting we held here, we talked about state law that allows school districts to investigate and possibly stop following unfunded mandates in certain areas. And Ms. Patel was kind enough to look up the actual section of the state school code for that. And I know this is probably not something that's a short-term issue, but I would certainly like to see us investigate what the real implications of that would be. If we could do some things to avoid having to do these types of dismissals, which are really very disruptive to everyone involved, and use our funds more appropriately instead of following some of the mandates that the state of Illinois has imposed upon us without funding, I think that would be well worth the time. So I don't know what type of research that takes, what type of effort it takes, and it's certainly not a right-now type issue, but we ought to have that in our toolkit as to what we can say we can and can't do. And we need to go back to legislature, or the courts, or whatever it takes us to do that and say, you know, you're not going to fund it, you're not going to put the money here, we're not going to start doing this, or we're going to stop doing it, simply because we can't afford to do these things that you thought were a great idea.
Any other suggestions or presentations? I think I would just like to comment, you know, with regard to Mr. McGowan's presentation regarding parental involvement, I do think we have other times that we discussed that issue here at the horseshoe. We've had presentations from Mr. Powers, and of course, that's always front of mind. I think it's, I think all board members recognize that that is a vital, vital piece to the education of our kids. I think it goes without saying that parental involvement is what gives a kid a leg up in terms of how they come to school ready and prepared. And certainly, Mr. McGowan, you're free to call me. I love to hear your ideas about how we can improve parental involvement, and for that matter, that goes for any member of the public, teachers, administration, anybody that would like to contact any one of us to make some suggestions, because I think that that is always a very, very good topic for discussion at committee, the whole. At the same time, knowing our limitations as a board, because we can't be, we can't mandate it, we can't be involved in the homes, we can't be in the schools. We can only create the environment that allows for something like that to take hold and blossom. So, Ms. Rem Butler?
Yes, I would just like to say, if, whether it's on behalf or in defense of Mr. McGowan, I love his passion about this issue, and would encourage he and others that want us to continue to pursue the path of what we can do for parental involvement, to stay with us, as hard as it may be, as long as it may take, but to stay with us, because your input is valued. I don't want you to go, I don't want him to go away tonight thinking that it is not. I know his passion is true. It's community, and it's also, I believe, personal for him. So I just want to thank him for bringing that before the board, and the PTA committee will be looking at topics or issues to take a hold of for next year, so we will trust that Mr. McGowan will be at the meeting and remind us of this particular interest and need for the community.
And, yeah, I've been, bullying was the thing I really wanted to tackle. I've been so invested in tackling this, and I have no idea what we should tackle next as a committee. So we definitely want to hear from people what needs to be done next.
Okay. And that takes us to tonight's final item, reports from board committees.
Meeting Thursday, 4:45, and again, we are in the very small room, and it gets hot.
I just want to add to that as well, as we look at the revision or the updating of the bullying policy, even involving cyberbullying...
of the bullying policy, even involving cyberbullying, that that committee has pushed the recommendation or the suggestions out to the policy committee, which goes to the legal committee and it'll come back, and we're expecting to bring before the board in May, action to approve a policy involving bullying and cyberbullying, so would encourage individuals to be looking for those, that revision to come forward or just that update on the policy.
And we did get, we got the comments back from the lawyers, which I have yet to deal with because I had a stomach bug, and we sent a preliminary draft to Ms. Wolfmeyer and Mr. Cloyde, but we haven't, because we haven't incorporated lawyers' comments yet, sent them a final draft of the policy, but it's exciting.
And we've done it with that type of timeline and purpose because we do not want to start another school year without there being especially a definition, a much more clear definition of what bullying is, so we can respond to it in appropriate manner for discipline.
Ms. Luizy?
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
This may be my last board meeting with this Board of Education. I just want to let you guys know it's been a real honor and a privilege to work with you guys over the last couple of years. For some of you who don't know, I've accepted new employment with the school district back where I live. Doesn't mean our firm is going away, you guys are still obviously in very good hands, but just thank you very much because it has been a great experience to meet all of you, to work with all of you, and again, it was really an honor and a privilege, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck to you, Ms. Luizy.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to key tonight's, to tonight's game. No, I think we will adjourn the meeting so we can all get home and, if you are interested to get home to watch the national championship, may I have motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second. Second.